The following program is sponsored by The Greek, Ely's Radio Shack Theater at 570 Altman in downtown Ely, and brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Ely, Nevada. Special meeting of the White Pine County Commission, November 23rd, 2020.
Good afternoon and welcome to this Monday, September 23rd. It's a special joint county commission and public health board of health meeting. Would you all please stand and join us in the pledge? And Shane, why don't you do this today?
May we follow me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, as is the normal for our meetings, we'll take a moment of silence, prayer, meditation, whatever you like to call it, so take this first moment to do reflect. Okay, well, open meeting. Mike, would you like to speak before I go to public comment?
Yeah, I was asked to kind of assist in getting this meeting set up on an emergency basis. Usually, open meeting law requires, what, the three days prior, business days or business days prior to having a meeting, so that the public has notice of the agenda items and can comment and be informed. You are about to have emergency meetings under the statute when an emergency arises needs to be addressed in time and manner. It doesn't permit for the public to use the three days. We were informed yesterday from our governor that he's going to be imposing some new regulations on local businesses and address the current spike in spread of COVID-19, not slowing down, but that we're continuing to increase. So based on those two factors, the fact that we, this board, wishes to address the new regulations and trying to give some guidance to the local businesses on how to handle that within the 24 hours, as well as maybe address new regulations this board wants to pass to the board of public health to have them take effect by tomorrow to mitigate against the spread of COVID-19, like we have done with other short meetings based on COVID-19 this meeting that are called and shortened timelines. We can ratify some of these things and put a lot of these things back on the agenda at our meeting in December to kind of go through and let the public have full input on it as well. So in that one, and then on item three, your item three, it has to do with the CARES Act. And given the limited scope of emergency meetings that I just laid out with regards to the new regulations and the spread of COVID, the CARES Act stuff, there's no timetable on it. We can get that done at the next meeting this summer. So I'm going to ask that the commission consider tailing item three and put that on the meeting because it's outside the COVID emergency meeting today. All right, so there is a proposed resolution that will be discussed here after public comment in item one, and this is going to require a lot of discussions, make sure that it's well led by the board before any kind of resolution passes that might have adverse implications to citizens and political implications as kind of... So we'll redress that here in a little bit. So then for public comments.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, I worked on this. I mean, this is just a draft, and we're here in front of the board, so folks have problems with it, you know, that's fine, but, you know, it's just a draft. It's not bad yet, so no reason to be angry. We're just here to have a good discussion, and we can go where it goes.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody on the phone that would like to public comment?
Yes, gentlemen.
Yes, go ahead. Who's this?
I'm White Pines Talk's Nevada Talk Network. First, as a courtesy, I wanted to advise people on this call, I am recording this public meeting as permitted by the Nevada Open Meetings Law for possible broadcast on CCL Live, the Nevada Talk Network, and our National USA Radio Network. Second, regarding Resolution 2020-76, seeking to declare a state of economic emergency of White Pine County, this resolution has not only my support, but also the support of our ownership, including Fred Weimberg, the CEO of the Nevada Talk Network, CCL Live, and the National USA Radio Network. In our opinion, our governor has forgotten that small counties like White Pine are totally dependent on our business community and the sales taxes and other fees generated by those businesses. Gentlemen, as critical as the, and ladies, and I have been critical of the some of the decisions this commission has made over the past few years, Resolution 2020-76 is a resolution that you should support for the health and well-being of White Pine County, and I would ask for a roll call vote when this resolution is put to a vote.
Thank you. Anyone else on the phone that would like to public comment? Do you see anyone?
No, sir.
Hearing none on the phone, we'll ask the audience, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak in public comment? George?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, per Governor's Sisalax Directive 024, Section 5, it states, individuals not exempted by this directive or the guidance issued by the Nevada Health, responsibly required to cover their nose and mouth with a mask or face covering when in a public space, where the public owned or privately owned, where the public has access by right, or invitation expressed or implied, whether by payment of money or not. Commissioner Boles again has attended at least 18, 19 meetings now without wearing a mask. I remind you that MU, they took an oath to enforce the law. Some laws we don't like, but that's the way it is. We stop at stop signs even though there's no reason for us to stop. We observe the speed limit around a school when it's flashing even though there aren't any school kids out. That's the law. You folks also have an obligation to, you know, when someone is not abiding by the rules and regulations, you have to bring them back into form. If not, you all need to resign. You can't have it both ways. That's why we have rules and regulations. Mr. Chairman, at a previous meeting, many previous meetings, I asked for certain information, and I've gotten limited enough, and once she, nothing else, she told me I would have a dot meeting. I didn't get it, just verbal. I told you that was not acceptable. I've been to the clerk's office looking for anything in writing. What I got was hand scratching your personal notes. I didn't ask for that. I need specifics. I asked you for specific items. You've given me nothing. I deserve some kind of protection here, okay? I'm the one that's suffering economically, no one else. Your building inspector has yet to issue me a building permit. Now we're going into winter season. You told me to go get it. I go out there, there's nothing there. Tell me how much I owe, I'll give you a check, but let's stop the games. Mr. Chairman, in attending many of the regional county commission meetings, they get to set up a sound system. You can't hear them. I've told them more than once, the county spent, I don't know, thousands on the system, and yet you can't install it for them. You can't hear the members talk or what they discuss on a given item. You have to interrupt them, and then you're told you're out of order. You need to do something, Mr. Chairman. That's your obligation. You took on the chairmanship, let's see some action. You're not doing anything. You're starting to disappoint me more and more all the time. So I have this time. Mr. Chairman, I'll wait to see what transpires in this meeting, but I need some questions answered, so, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else in the public who'd like to speak, please? One last call on the phone as well. Anybody on the phone? Okay, hearing none and seeing none, we're going to move on to page two, item one. It's a discussion for possible action to approve Resolution 2020-76 declaring a state of economic emergency due to the COVID-19 state mandated regulations and orders, and issuing certain local orders pertaining thereto on a temporary basis. Why don't you go ahead and start with Travis?
Yeah, I mean, the resolutions are passed in backup. Me and, and Mike worked on this. Like I said, we tried to hit the high points, you know, and that's where we're at. You know, I just think it's unfortunate we've been put in this position and haven't had much outreach at all from the state to try to, you know, make something work in this directive. It does state that, you know, we encourage establishments to, you know, stay in good faith with the directive we're currently under until the night of today. Well, I have certain issues with this one as well. I think it's a good middle ground, and everyone's making a fight with that, and, you know, keeping our public health, you know, you know, there is obviously infection of this virus, and, you know, I think, I mean, I just think it does the best we can with what we got, and, you know, these new regulations, Ely's going to look like, you know, a board about who knows what. It's just a really unfortunate situation, and all this is covered mandate, you know, no legislative action at all from the state has been put through this, and the governor's just doing whatever he wants to do. So, you know, I know this is an uncomfortable situation, and I took a lot of care in bringing this forward, and, but, you know, at the end of the day, we've got to stand up, or why the hell are we here?
Okay, Ian?
Yeah, among the long list of offensive things the governor mentioned last night, one of the more annoying was, he was asked by a reporter how businesses are supposed to make it, particularly restaurants, at 25% capacity. You're just cutting off 75% of their business. And his response was, well, I think they ought to be able to make it. And I just say, man, you don't, economics don't ride and fall on the governor's opinion. It's basic math, and it's atrocious. And as we said here in this, you know, he's exceeded his constitutional authority, he's exceeded his state statutory authority, and we've stated that over and over again, and last night, he completely crossed the line. It's unacceptable. We're not going to stand by and watch our businesses be choked out. The oath we took was to preserve liberty in its simplest form, and that's what we're going to do. So they may come back and fight, but as Tom Travis, at least, we won't be cussing nobody.
I say one other thing, just hats off to the business today that filed a lawsuit with Joey Gilbert. You know, I hope our judges adhere to their oath and stand strong.
Shane?
I agree completely. I think yesterday's measures were a complete overset. I found it comical there are certain businesses that have to be limited to 25%, but malls and retail stores are still fine where we were at.
And massage parlors, too.
And, yeah, and I'm not, I'm not really, I, it just seems like we've got a governor that's trying to keep up with the cool kids in California, Oregon, and Washington, who he perceives as the cool kids, and he's just trying to scramble along and stay with their mandates, and I can't support it.
Lloyd?
I would, before I comment, I would really like to hear from our sheriff, I would like to hear from the district attorney, and from our health officer. I read through this, some of it, the way it's written, I do agree that one size does not fit all, most definitely, but I would like to hear because you're putting it, we would be putting in it on the shoulders, asking our sheriff and our district attorney, and I want, you know, putting it on them as to what they do or do not do, which might be against what their oaths are. So with that said, I would like to hear what they have to say.
Absolutely.
Okay, I'll speak after you, and then we will allow that, we will allow the sheriff and the public health officer as well, because this is a joint meeting. I agree 100% with each one of the commissions is on here. I listened yesterday, I watched, and I was on a conference call with Senator Masto's office in the other 15 rural counties last Friday. This particular action isn't devastating, it's catastrophic. It totally wipes out any operation or any ability to stay alive. You had a 50%, and we've gone along with that, and I think the businesses have done the best they can. But when you go to 75%, people are going to be laid off, businesses are not going to be able to operate, how are you going to pay their light bill? Are they going to continue to have to ask us for CARES money? And they haven't really done that so far, but our citizens, that, one of the things the governor said yesterday, you'll have to make a reservation to your restaurants. Well, he doesn't live in Ely or some of these smaller rural communities. We don't have that many, so if you want to make a, if you have to make a reservation to go have breakfast or dinner or lunch, what are the chances of getting in there? Or if you go there and you're waiting outside, how's that helping distance-wise? When you go in, and I go almost every Sunday to breakfast, and usually at a certain time there's five or six different people waiting to come in. So you're social distancing, they're all wearing masks, the citizens are doing a really, really good job, and yet you put them in that category where they have to stand and be a little closer intact than what they would. The bars and the restaurants that rely on a little bit of distancing, maybe people watching the ballgame to come into their, to their establishment to watch a ballgame on a Thursday or a Monday night, they can't do that. They can't operate their business. Travis mentioned the fact that Attorney Gilbert has filed a lawsuit on behalf of the theater, questioning the governor's ability to do this. We don't want to sit here and make a whole bunch of ways, but this is absolutely ridiculous to ask our small community, and there's 15 other rural counties are involved here as well, and you're sitting here looking at a state that was, and I hate to categorize it, it's a red state, all the rurals are in conjunction, we're all small. The two larger counties, Clark and Washoe, where the population base is, and to bundle us in that same category, saying White Pine County is the same as Clark County or Washoe County. We're not, and neither is Land or Gerecker or the other county. We are all in different size, we all have our own specific needs, and one of the needs is that our people are allowed to work, our businesses are allowed to stay open, sustain a business. This, this action absolutely tells businesses, we don't care if you stay alive or stay afro. If you go under, so be it. That's not the right attitude. We need this, we need our people. One of the other comments last night was order on Amazon or Walmart or one of these. Okay, that's fine, but what happens to our local businesses when we order on Amazon or one of these things? The people aren't going downtown to shop and pay taxes within White Pine County. We're going out, so naturally, a lot of people do that, but that's part of the thing. The other part is keeping our young kids out of school, not allowing them to go to school. They're the least vulnerable of all, and yet they're pulling them back to talking about virtual learning. We need to socially interact, whether you're young or whether you're old, part of life. Isolating seniors in a care center where they can't even see their wife, can't see their loved ones. You put them into, telling people you can only have eight people at your Thanksgiving dinner, give me a break. I'm sorry, but I'm getting a little bit testy here, but that's just the way it is, and I mean to be testy because these edicts that he's trying to put on all the counties as one are absolutely wrong. Each county has its own agenda, it has its own circumstances. So that being said...
I'd like to have one more.
Okay, I'll turn it over to Travis, all in line, I'll turn it over to Travis, and then we'll ask for the sheriff and the public health officer as well. Go ahead, Travis.
Yeah, and if everybody would recall back, whenever it was last summer, when he shut down bars in some of the counties, he stated that he should not have done a one-size-fits-all approach back in March and April. He stated that and said going forward, you know, we're going to work individually and custom tailor-made fit plans to communities and stuff. Well, that obviously has not happened. We're back to one-size-fits-all approach. So, you know, I don't, I don't know what to say, it's just hypocrisy, basically. Go ahead.
At this time, Lloyd requested sheriff Henry Rugg, would you please come forward?
Thank you, Commissioner, I appreciate you. I'm looking into looking at your resolution and respond. First of all, I wish I'd had a little bit of input on this as it was being developed. I just got this about 12:30 this afternoon, read through it, was somewhat taken back to the truth, I really was. I agree with your philosophy that one size does not fit all. I totally agree with that, and I was very disappointed with the governor's directives towards us. But as I looked at the resolution, especially where the sheriff's office is involved, which is section three and section four, we can't do that, plain and simple, that cannot happen. One, that's a selective enforcement issue, and for me to actually say to state representatives that are coming into here to do inspections, and I have to escort them out of town, absolutely not, I will not participate in that in any capacity. In Article Three, one of the things you have to take into consideration is you're talking about people that are coming into our community to do a specific job, and you're saying because they're coming from a area that's more populous, that they are subject to maybe more exposure to COVID. If we looked at that principle and applied that to Ely, that would mean every person that travels from any metropolitan area to Ely would have to check into White Pine County and then quarantine themselves for 14 days to either visit a family member, to do some type of business, to do anything. So that, that is a catch-all that cannot be enforced, and, one, I don't want people coming into our office unless they need to file complaints, take care of fines, or do time in jail or something of that nature. We try to limit the amount of traffic that is in there. So I'd ask you to look at that number three section again and really reconsider that. And then section four, of course, you could direct me to do anything that you want, you could put that in the directive, and am I going to do it? I can tell you right now, no. As the sheriff of White Pine County, I'll just tell you no. And I know I spoke to Mike a little bit about my concerns after I got this, and that's the stats. I support you as far as your ideas and philosophies, I thought that that's what the governor established that task force for, was it so that they could look at our specific areas and then give guidance through our public health officer, recommendations to White Pine County. Unfortunately, that seems to be just smoke in the air, but let's work on this a little bit together, come up with some better ideas.
Yes, I appreciate the feedback, and by no means that we, you know, not leave the island right now, that's why we got this meeting. So, you know, because by no means that regardless of what we decide, you know, is there any, you know, we weren't actively trying to snuff you out or nothing, nothing like that, so.
No.
Appreciate the honesty, and that's what this meeting's for, and we'll ask what we can ask, but thank you for your stance.
Thank you.
Okay, item two is the public health, but would you please come forward and address what Commissioner Carson would like to...
And I also, you've got the DA on here also, I think the district attorney, number five.
I will.
I would like to hear from him also. Sorry, Derek.
But we'll do one at a time. Please come forward.
Give us an update, Derek.
And then we'll do the district attorney, and then we'll go proceed to the meeting.
Thank you. Let's give you an update. We have currently 40 positive cases in the county. We, that's 40 active currently cases, so they're in quarantine. We've now had our second death in the county. I came this morning. I can tell you that I was a little disturbed when I did some contact tracing. Our last county health meeting, we talked about a business in town that had way more than even the 50% capacity of the Halloween party. I tracked one of the patients persons from this Halloween party that lived with their grandmother and now is on a life support and ventilator outside of our county due to COVID-19 complications. This was disturbing to me because I know this woman personally. I've dealt with her and her family ever since I moved to White Pine County, so it saddens me to make the connection. As far as this resolution, you can't have your cake and eat it too. You guys want to thumb your noses at the governor because he's a Democrat? Point, point, that's it? That's majority of your cases and your arguments have been the Democratic governor and his ability to dictate to small counties. I get that.
For the record, we called him a communist.
Which I found was very unprofessional, Ian, to call the governor a communist.
It's 100% true.
Well, that is your opinion, that is your opinion.
Please, please continue.
So, you can't have your cake and eat it too. If you want to pass this resolution, I get your concern about businesses in our town, but on the flip side, you can't sit here and do nothing about public health. Yes, you've hired me, I appreciate it, it's great. It's not worth the money, okay? It's not. The headaches, the day in, day out, trying to track this, and then get no tea, so I have no way to enforce any of our public health things, okay? It's ridiculous. I'm not, don't mean to come up across upset, but again, you want to pass this resolution? Go for it, I resign. That's not a threat. You do not need public help in this county if you're going to pass resolutions from men of science and men and women who are trying to prevent the health outbreak that COVID-19 is. Truthfully, that is it. So either we're going to move forward as a county, trying to curb the spread of the virus, or we're not. Truthfully, if you choose not, great, I just got all my days off back, I will be happy to not have to pay, I'll be happy to resign, and I hope you'll take that resignation. That is not an idle threat, there's just no point in having my position if, one, you're not going to listen to what I have to say, two, have some kind of teeth where I can work with businesses and help them to be safe, be open, and to prosper the best way they can. Do I agree 25% is going to make it very hard to achieve? Yeah, I agree with that. I don't know how a business could do it. I couldn't do it. If you told me tomorrow I have to only live on 25% of my income, there's just no way. But on the flip side, where do we draw the line? When we're at 50%, us as a county commission and public health, we weren't willing to do anything. Truthfully, think back, you weren't willing to do anything when they brought you 28 cases linked to one activity. The comment was, hey, that's great, 10,000 people, 28 cases, that sounds so bad. Well, it is bad. I've got a woman on a ventilator because of that party. It's not that she got it outside when she went shopping at Walmart, it's not that she got it from the hospital, it's not that she got it from anywhere, because it's a disappointment. Again, I'm happy with whatever you want to do as a commission, but realize if you choose to move forward and you choose to do things, we can't, we can't have our cake and eat it too. We, last, our last health meeting, we voted and ratified 198 quarantine orders. Woo-hoo, great. But then again, you don't want our sheriff to enforce, respond to complaints related to alleged direct violations. Why are we having quarantine orders? We probably shouldn't if we're not going to have any tea by the sheriff's department to enforce it. That's stupid. That's like telling my kid to stay out of the candy jar, and when he gets in the candy jar, just like, yeah, who cares? Not a big deal, right? But on the flip side, where do we draw the line? When we're at fifty percent, us as a county commission and public health, we weren't willing to do anything, truthfully, think back, you weren't willing to do anything when they brought you twenty-eight cases linked to one activity, the comment was, hey, that's great, ten thousand people, twenty-eight cases, that sounds so bad, well, it is bad, I've got a woman on a ventilator because of that pardon. It's not that she got it outside when she went shopping at Walmart, it's not that she got it from the hospital, it's not that she got it from anywhere, it's, it's, it's a disappointment. Again, I'm happy with whatever you want to do as a commission, but realize, if you choose to move forward and you choose to do things, we, we, we can't, we can't have our cake and eat it too. We, last, our last health meeting, we voted and ratified a hundred and ninety-eight quarantine orders, woo-hoo, great, but then again, you don't want our sheriff to enforce, respond to complaints related to alleged direct violations, why are we having quarantine orders? We probably shouldn't, if we're not gonna have any tea by the sheriff's department that enforce it. That's stupid, that's like telling my kid to stay out of the candy jar, and when he gets in the candy jar, just like, nah, who cares, not a big deal, right? So you're welcome to make any resolutions you want, which is your prerogative, just realize, I, I'm not gonna be part of it. I'm a man of science, I believe in science and I believe in God, and part of both those beliefs.